We have one proclamation to do and then we're going to get to your comments. Yes, uh, Councilwoman Gums, I believe that they are... Ms. Deborah Mitchell, if you will come forward with your lovely family, we are ready to honor you. Or friends, your crew, whoever you got. Bring your peoples.
Mr. Mayor, you want to reconvene first for you?
Yes, I will take a motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene?
Right, but probably move it a second. Uh, we'll just do it by show of hands. Raise your hands if you're ready to reconvene. All right, we are reconvened.
I record that as unanimous. We reconvene at six fourteen PM.
All right.
All right, so thank you all for hanging in there with us tonight. Um, I want to present this proclamation to Ms. Deborah Ann Mitchell. You don't mind me saying Ann, do you? I'm sorry. So let me tell you a little bit about this dynamic lady. Deborah Ann Mitchell serves as the President and Chief Executive Officer of Dynasty Financial Consulting, a successful mortgage broker firm headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas founded in twenty, excuse me, two thousand and four, she and her team offered a suite of full mortgage services specializing in customizing financing programs for potential homeowners while educating them on financial literacy, bridging the gap for her clients to achieve the American dream of owning a home. I'm not gonna read all of this, but, okay. Whereas her years in the industry have allowed her to effectively develop, manage, and retain relationships, providing the type of customer service that has weathered the upheaval and unpredictability of the housing market that has adversely impacted the coun- the country's economy. Whereas she volunteers at various high schools training and mentoring students on entrepreneurship and financial planning and literacy. In addition, she has sat on multiple entrepreneur panels for various organizations to discuss complexity of business ownership. Amongst her numerous recognitions, Ms. Mitchell is a prominent member of the National Association of Mortgage Brok- Mortgage Brokers and the National Coalition of One Hundred Black Women, where she is honored with the Financial Woman of the Impact Award in two thousand and seventeen. Whereas Deborah has also been honored by marquee's who's who in America, Ms. Deborah Mitchell is a businesswoman, mother, friend, mentor, sister, daughter, implementer. Deborah has reached levels in her life she did not know were possible. She says God in His grace have prepared me for where I stand today. Even with her remarkable professional sus- success, her greatest achievement is being a mother. I know that's right. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council, city council members of the city of South Fulton and on behalf of the over one hundred and seven thousand residents that reside in the city, hereby proclaim Tuesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three as citywide celebration of Deborah A. Mitchell Appreciation Day and encourage all residents to extend our best wishes for the beacon of light in our community. She lives in District Two. We support her. She also came out and gave back to our community for our toy drive, toy drive that was held at Stanley's. And when I tell you she stepped up and she showed out, she did. So, um, when I know that somebody lives in our community and in the city of South Fulton and just shows out, I want to make sure they're honored. So continue what you're doing, continue. And it's Women's Month next week, well, actually tomorrow. So, good. This is exactly what it's about, so here you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You want to say a few words?
Okay, well, um, it sounds like she summed up everything about me and my life. And it's, it's all true. I am greatly honored to receive this, uh, this award. I have received, um, another proclamation in another county and it's great. I believe in giving back to the community. My, my team, we take pride in providing good business, doing good services, and it means a lot to me, and I thank you.
And maybe she can do some home ownership and, uh, workshops here in the city of South Fulton.
Just call me. And call it done, okay? I'm here to help and support.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all you do. Let's get this picture. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that brings us to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Like to read the rules for making public comment into the record. Members of the general public wishing to make public comments at a City of South Fulton City Council meeting must be residents of the city of South Fulton, except that county, state, and federal elected officials should be allowed to speak regardless of city of residence. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker. The bell will signal the end of the speaker's time. Public comments should be limited to only those items appearing on the current, uh, city council meeting agenda tonight. Comments or issues not appearing on the current city council meeting agenda should not be allowed. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors should have their microphone disabled. Speakers should not be allowed to make remarks that have been legally recognized to not be protected speech while addressing the council. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors should have their microphone disabled. Speakers may not use public comments to campaign for political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates for the purpose of limiting political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. With that, Mr. Mayor and Council, we did receive several speakers' cards. As I call your name, uh, please approach one of the two microphones and please state your name, your address, your council district, and the item on the agenda which you will be speaking about this evening. I'll proceed with the forms that were submitted prior to, uh, the beginning of the meeting. First speaker is Ms. Chandra Simmons, Richard Snellings, Michael Johnson, Darrell Hooker. If you're pres- if you're present, please approach one of the microphones, state your name, address, district, and which item you will be referencing. Chandra Simmons, Richard Snellings, Michael Johnson, Darrell Hooker.
Wait, I'm sorry, just out of, out of respect for our council, before we begin, we did amend the agenda. I don't know what everyone is coming to talk about. If the item was on the published agenda, are they... What's, what's your pleasure? Okay. Well, that was one person. Okay, all right, go ahead, proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chandra Simmons. I live in the city of South Fulton, obviously, District Five, three, four, eight, five, Ravenswood is my address. I am speaking regarding item number eighteen on the agenda. Can I go ahead and start? Okay, so, I stand in support of the renovation and site improvement of Burdette Park and Gym. As a new resident of District Five, I've learned that Burdette Park is a historic figure within the community for years providing not only countless sanctioned functions, summer camps, afternoon programs, social and sporting events, notably the Outlaws. Burdette Park and its coaches, parental guidance has instrument, has been instrumental in love education foundation, educational foundation, shared members within the, within and outside of the ecosystem. Those who grew up within, those who grew up in love of Burdette Park now have children, and we desire to create a shared fond memory of Burdette Park. Unfortunately, we all have noticed and voiced the decline care and maintenance noted at Burdette Park and Gym. Our concerns have been voiced to staff at Burdette Park as well as our District Five representative, Mr. Corey Reeves. Some of those concerns voiced are unkept and unsanitary facilities, lack of attention specifically to the facilities used to educate adults and in the informational technology and computers, uh, program. Burdette Park continues to be, and desires to be appreciated by members of, by members of and outside the city of South Fulton community, aspiring to be the best representation of the community. So we are expecting you, the council members, public works, employees of Burdette Park, as well as the growing members of the city of South Fulton, each bearing shared responsibilities and care of Burdette Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We, we can't hear you. Uh, would you make sure that that mic is turned on?
Hello, my name is Richard Snellings. I'm in District One, nineteen eighty Lockloman Trail. I am here to speak about Agenda Item Twenty-seven. Now, what I'm about to say is based on a next-door response to my post from Councilwoman Willis, where she posted sensitive, unredacted personnel records in an attempt to try and attack the mayor because we were discussing her bad behavior. I read the illegal legislation where members of the city council are once again attempting to reduce the mayor's authority, so there can be no accountability of the city council. This legislation is illegal because it infringes upon the mayor's state rights as well as his constitutional rights. As a reminder, Georgia law provides that Georgia is a one-party consent state. You can record any conversation that you are a party to, and he does not need your permission. If you really, if you really comprehended the law governing executive session, you would have came across the Section Fifty dash fourteen dash one with regard to Section E two C, which states that minutes of the executive session shall be recorded. It goes further to state that it nee- it need not be recorded. The law, the law says need not. It does not say shall not. It does not, it does not say cannot. Nowhere in the law does it say is prohibited. Whether you like it or not, this is a right afforded to everyone that this council cannot take away. This actually is an abuse of your, your power if you affirmatively vote for this. The act of recording is not illegal. What is done with the recording is where the problem comes in. Simply maintaining a recorded record does not break the law, but your legislation does. Instead of trying to hide behind executive session, why don't you use executive session for its intended purpose? If you're not following the law, what is the, what is the problem? I'm sorry, if you're, if you're not breaking the law, then what is the problem with it being recorded? Thank you.
Mr. Michael Johnson, Darrell Hooker, Julia Dorsey.
All right, I'm Mike Johnson, uh, Avenue of Redwood, five, eight, eight, zero. I'm in District Five, maybe Seven there, I'm not sure with the way this last thing went down with the voting. But, uh, I have a court case that's pending, and I've been waiting for over a year to have my case heard in person, in court. I'm putting all of you on notice that you're denying my constitutional right to due process by not having in-person court. According to the agenda, I see that someone's supposed to have been voting on item number fifteen tonight. I don't know where that stands. I see that our city leaders are asking for money and asking for the council to vote on things such as TVs and curtains and all this other stuff over at Wolf Creek and park stuff, which is great. Our city loves all of that stuff. But I think our city deserves a courtroom for our officers out here working and these citizens to present their case. Like the minister said when she was opening this up with prayer, you know, be a good steward of the citizens. I know some of you guys might can't get along, whatever the case may be, but those differences gotta be set aside. The citizens need to come first out here, and that's it. That's, something gotta happen. You guys gotta start working together a little bit better than you are. That's what we expect from our city leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We are working diligently on that issue next.
Mr. Darrell Hooker, present. Julia Dorsey, Al Dorsey, Rosie Jackson Puckett. If you're present, please approach one of the mic, state your name, address, and item you're referencing this evening.
I'm Julia, Julia Dorsey, um, item number twelve. Resident Fulton County. Speaking on behalf of, um, Ms. Voe, special use permit zero, zero, two, zero, zero, seven. I was a patron of her, um, salon in Forest Park for several years. Several years now, I understand she's trying to open up a salon in South Fulton County. I do miss that upscale luxury experience that I gained from her, um, salon when I did patronize it. She hasn't been in the area, so I have been using another salon. But I'm welcoming this back and can't wait till she opened up the salon 'cause the experience was like none other, and I didn't have to drive outside of the city to get that experience that I received from her. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Dorsey, uh, I, I noticed you, you live in the city of Atlanta?
Yes.
Yes, unfortunately, our rules, uh, you have to be a resident of the city to provide public comment, but I was saying that to Mr. Dorsey 'cause he had signed up as well.
Are, are we good? Mr. Dorsey, you have a different comment? Does he live in the city of South Fulton?
No, they, they live in the city of Atlanta.
Okay, sorry about, sorry about that. Um, next?
Next is Ms. Rosie Jackson Puckett, Joyce Jones, Pamela Harris.
Councilwoman Emeritus Jackson, always good to see you.
Yeah, right. My name is Rosie Jackson Puckett, and I live at forty-three sixty-five Melanie Drive in District Seven. Item number twenty-three. First, I would like to thank Councilwoman Gums for presenting a resolution under city council and city administration pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of South Fulton. Civility is practicing formal politeness, courtesy, and behavior in speech. I sat in one of those seats for two and a half years, and I am proud of the accomplishments made while in office for District Five. Am I proud of everything that happened while on council? No. But we all must know there are limits to everything. I was always told if you continue to hit a dog, eventually the dog will bite back. We all need to stop admonishing each other. Please take it from me and understand the constituents are tired of the bickering and backbiting. You might have moved mountains for your district, but the last thing they are going to remember is the actions they see on television and on YouTube screen. They don't even care why you did it. They only can remember the lasting appearance that it gave. You are hurting yourselves. Trust me. It will follow you to the ballot box. Voters are visual. Item number twenty-seven. Amending Section One, three oh oh two, subsection M, executive session, chapter three, designating an official person authorized to take the required minutes during executive session to prohibit the unauthorized recordings of executive session. Um, what I'm saying here is there, and I think, uh, Mr. Richard, he said it best, the law, the Georgia law states that, um, Section sixteen eleven sixty-two, that sh- nothing shall prohibit a person from intercepting a wire, oral, or electronic communication where such person is a party to the communication. So any one person that is a party to that conversation, you cannot prohibit them from taping or doing what they care to do in, uh, conversation. And last but not least, number twelve. Um, the special use permit U twenty-two dash oh oh seven for another nail salon at twenty-two twenty-five Jonesboro Road. We in District Five, Six, and Seven, can I please finish this? Have wants, needs, and desires besides getting our nails done, going to the liquor store, and going to the barber shop. We would like to see, hold on, it's almost finished. Um, please allow us to develop, grow, and bring in businesses where we can live, work, and play without having to leave our immediate surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson.
Joyce Jones, Pamela Harris, and Brianna Wise.
Hi. My name is Joyce Jones. I'm at sixteen eighty-eight New Hope Road, southwest Atlanta, I mean, well, southwest Atlanta, but it's South Fulton. But my comment is about, uh, the municipal court. And I just want to say that I, I just feel this appalling for us to be moving the municipal po- uh, court. We've already moved the police station. And if we are moving the court, why would be, we would be removing the municipal court? If we moved the municipal court, why do we need a city? Why do we need all of you all? We might as well get rid of the whole city if we gonna move the court because we don't need all this. We don't need you all. We don't need a court. We don't need a police station. We don't need none of this. We may as well go back into Atlanta 'cause we don't have a city hall, we don't, we don't have a city hall, we won't have a court, we won't have a police station. So why do we? It took, it took what, three months to build that, um, um, warehouse where they put, uh, where you put, uh, storage on Camp Creek? Now you gonna tell me you can't put a police station? And that's big as any police station you could ever have? So you mean you can't tell me you can't build a police, uh, municipal court in three months? We have more land in South Fulton than you have anywhere in the state of Georgia. So you can't put a municipal court or a police station somewhere in the, in the city, city of South Fulton? It don't make no sense. I look at all of you, and I, when I moved out here, I was so proud to see that it's a black city. And I look at you all the way y'all bickering and, and fussing and going on, and the way y'all don't support the mayor. This is just disgusting that every week you all on the TV, it's some arguing is going on. It's disgusting. I was born in nineteen forty-nine. In nineteen forty-nine, I couldn't even sit on a darn bus. My mother had to jake me up from sitting in the front of the bus because we couldn't sit in the front of the bus. We had to go in the back of the bus. And now you all sitting at, at the table where we got an all-black city? And y'all sitting up there and y'all not running a whole city without arguing and fussing at each other?
Mama Joyce, we-
This is a shame.
Thank you. We, we hear you. We're, we're working hard. We're, we're gonna do better. Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Harris. I live in District One. The items that I wanted to discuss are thirteen and fifteen. Uh, I was at a previous meeting, and there were some gentlemen here, I think they're with the Petrocart Company, and they're wanting to put, uh, liquor stores in, in gas stations. And Ms. Gums asked that person that came to the microphone about crime. And I found out at a later time that there was a murder at one of their gas stations. And so I'm really concerned about these, uh, service stations wanting to become liquor stores. The other item is the municipal po- court. I do think that our court should be within our city. Um, and, uh, basically that's it. I, I'm hoping that you all can get together and stop, uh, as Joyce said, all the bickering and fighting. And, uh, Ms. Jones, just keep your head up. Weapons form, but they won't prosper.
Thank you. Yes, the next speakers are Brianna Wise and Drew DeMan.
All right, I just, I do just wanna, um, just make a quick comment. We've heard some things about court. You all know. We're, we're, we're working. We, we hope to have an answer for you this evening. That's all I can say right now, but just stick, stick with us. Go ahead.
Okay, yes. My name is Brianna Wise, thirty-two twenty Spring Street. I'm a proud graduate of Westlake High School. Woo-woo. Okay, but I'm here to speak on, um, the special use permit zero, zero, two, zero, zero, seven, item number twelve. Um, Ms. Voe, she was a pleasure to work with. Um, she always ensures that all her technicians have the necessary tools and equipment to provide all the service for any customer coming in. She's, um, she has a willingness to teach and, and, um, provide a safe space for all of her employees. Um, Ms. Voe is a wonderful person. She has a beautiful personality. She's very welcoming. Even if there was a cultural difference, she made it very understanding for all of us. And, um, I'm just here to say that I'm excited about the opening of her new salon, and I think it'll be a great addition to the community, and people will love her bright personality, and, um, she will provide exceptional service. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
And the last speaker for this evening's public comment is Drew DeMan. Last speaker for this evening's public comment is Drew DeMan.
All right. Good evening, Council Mayor. Uh, I'm Drew DeMan. I live at forty-six forty Gordon Street in the wonderful city of South Fulton, in the Fife District. Um, and I'm here to speak about, uh, issue number, agenda item number twenty-four, um, joining the Metro Atlanta Land Bank, which I think is an awesome step. Um, you know, being in South Fulton as long as I have, you recognize readily that the, that land use and zoning and land designations and what we're gonna do with all this land is really everything. And I think that land banking is a really positive step for us. Um, and, uh, it presents a lot of options in terms of, um, mixed economic opportunity for, um, people of various economic backgrounds to live in hopefully economically diverse neighborhoods. Um, we don't want to see all the rich people living over here and all of the poor people living over there. Um, and so it, it presents us with a really awesome opportunity to collectivize our land ownership as a city and, um, make sure that that spins out benefits for people at all economic levels. But then I also want to make sure that, uh, as we move forward, we are doing everything we can to conserve natural areas and green space, which is of course one of the stated goals of the Metro Atlanta Land Bank. Um, and so I want to make sure that we do things like green corridors, um, agricultural areas, a garden district, or garden districts throughout the city. And, um, you know, kinda like, uh, the, the Lorax, as there is nobody among the trees to speak, uh, I will often, uh, take the opportunity to speak for the trees. So, um, yeah, I just think for our, uh, economic development, for the sake of our future environmental health and the well-being and the, uh, um, welfare of, uh, people who live here in the city, that we should focus our efforts as we get into land banking on making sure that not only are we land banking real estate to be developed, that we are also land banking that invaluable priceless land that would be agricultural in nature or left, uh, simply as green space and natural areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMan. Anytime we can work in Dr. Seuss is a good day. Uh, that's, that concludes our public comments?
That's correct.
All right, uh, please sound the next item.
Next item on tonight's agenda is council comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna start, we'll go in, uh, District Order, we'll start with District One. My Councilwoman, Dr. Rowe.
A couple of things. Um, court has been held virtually and, um, our court administrator, Ms. Dixon, has indicated that we have an in-person date for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So I wanted to respond to that. Trama Crowe Park, some of the improvements under the U R A have already begun. I'm excited about that. Um, it's long overdue and so, um, be looking for continued improvements at Trama Crowe Park. Um, in response to, um, one other thing that I think came out of comments at our last meeting, I want to assure the public that there are no, um, pellets that are being proposed to manufacture at the Waste Pro facility on Fulton Industrial. Um, and finally, I want to thank everybody who came out for my sewer town hall meeting. We got some invaluable information for residents who are interested in tying in the sewer. And so I look forward to working with those residents who've reached out, um, to, to move that forward. So thank you.
Oh, and one last thing. Uh, we have a, I'll be sending out information. We have a grand opening for the Starbucks that's coming to Santown Crossing, so stay tuned.
All right, on to South Fulton's Crown Jewel, District Two.
Yeah, y'all know I'm excited about that Starbucks. I can't wait. So I can't wait till you get that information out. Um, first I want to say happy, uh, last day of Black History Month. Um, we've done a lot, you know, we highlighted HBCUs, we've highlighted so many different things to show our culture. And, um, even looking at Good Morning America this morning, I got so excited to see the Divine Nine and their recognition of us. So again, happy Black History Month. Tomorrow is, uh, interna- no.
Women's History.
Women's History Month, and that also includes International Women's Day as well. So March is gonna be a hot month as well. Um, wanna, first, Brandon Eads, he is now, um, with us full-time. Uh, he was actually an intern for the city of South Fulton. Um, but he has decided to, uh, take a leap and really assist me ongoing. So I'm looking forward to, uh, the support from Mr. Eads and him helping with the district. Thank you for joining the city of South Fulton. Also too, um, want to mention that we will, District Two, which this sanitation town hall will be open to any district. Um, as a resident, I want you to know that you don't have to just go to your district town halls. It's good to come and see us, but also at the same time, these, uh, town halls are open to the community. I will be having our, uh, sanitation town hall on March the twenty-second at Wolf Creek Library. I've been asked to do a virtual, um, town hall as well, so with that I may add a virtual feature. But, uh, Mr. Gordon Burkett will also be there to, uh, talk about sanitation, which I know we all are kinda like, ugh, but sanitation is here and we want to, um, make sure that you get all of your questions answered and not all of the misinformation that is possibly out there. And lastly, um, we do have a lot of things that are happening, but on March thirtieth, we are bringing back our women's, uh, business mixer where we had at Fresh to Earth, the Herb Store. So we're encouraging, uh, women, again, March is Women's History Month, uh, to come out and network with other women. We had a very good time last year. Was that last year? I think it was last year, but, um, we had a great time with women, uh, in South Fulton that came out and networked. And we'll be doing that same thing again at Fresh to Earth on, in Button Village at six P M, uh, on March the thirtieth to close our Women's History Month. That is all that I have. I hope that we have a great meeting tonight. And I am so excited to, uh, show that we are working together and our civility, uh, resolution uh, will be probably approved, right? I'm hoping. Okay. Good job, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, District Three, the place to be, Councilwoman Helen C. Willis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank all residents, uh, for coming out and I thank each of you for your sincere public comments. Um, I typically don't, um, respond to public comments because they're what they are, public comments. And everyone is entitled to their opinion, but everyone is not entitled to the, you know, um, was, what they consider their set of facts. Facts are facts. And what is a fact is this is mayor and city council. And this is not a one-sided, uh, situation. We must support each other. Uh, the mayor must support this council and this council should support the mayor. And I do agree, we all comprehensively need to do a better job with working together. And the mayor has committed to doing things differently in twenty twenty-three and so have we. So thank you, Mayor. Um, as far as me, uh, putting things on social media and responding to things on social media, what would not happen in twenty twenty-three is that my character will be attacked and people share things and then they run with the narrative and then I not provide a response or an official response. Anything that I have posted on social media, I am confident that it's legal and I'm gonna leave it at that. I want to thank everyone who participated in my sanitation meeting. Um, in the month of February, I had two, one at Welcome Mall Park and one at Enan Church. They were both in District Three. They were both well-attended. Thank you to all those District Three residents and all the visitors who are not in District Three who attended. Uh, all of the meetings went very well. We will be having another meeting. Um, my next series of meeting will be a transparent conversation with public safety. So on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at six P M, at Friendship Community Church, there will be a public safety meeting. And that public safety meeting will be inclusive of our Fulton County Sheriff, Patrick Labott, and also our Chief of Police, Chief Meadows. And we will, the facilitators of that meeting will be our Commissioner, Marvin Arrington, who represents most of South Fulton now, and also me. So we will have questions that we will ask them and we ask if you have questions, go ahead and send them in. And then we will also take questions from the community. Um, nothing is off the table. So I will ask that you come out and if you live in District Three, you will be, uh, receiving, um, a notification in the mail. As far as sewer suspension, I have received a few calls. Let me say this. Again, Marvin Commissioner, Marvin Arrington, represents majority of South Fulton now. So if there is gonna be any sewer expansion, it would not be district-specific. It would be comprehensively. He's going to make sure that whatever is in District One will also be in District Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. So if you have concerns or if you would like to, uh, if you would like to get information on sewer expansion, please forward that to me. And most importantly, reach out to your county commissioner, Commissioner Marvin Arrington. He's responsible for county governance. And then our school board representative, and I have two that represent my district, is Fran Warren and Kimberly Dove. If you have issues concerning the schools, reach out to your school representatives. We are responsible for your municipal services. And while we partner with all governing, governing bodies, we just need everybody to make sure that they reach out to the people who's responsible for their governance. Again, if I'm your councilperson in District Three, if you have questions, I know they're having some areas where people want sewer expansion, please send that information to me so that I can get the commissioner that represents majority of, uh, South Fulton, Commissioner Arrington, involved. Um, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for coming out, being patient with us. And I'm gonna put it in this, we are five years old. And when I was five years old, you know, there were a lot of things that I had to be taught to do. Most of us are newly elected, well, was newly elected. We had to go to training. We had to learn to become policymakers. We're doing a lot of good things in the city, but it's being overshadowed by people who have their own agenda. And if you live in District Three, please reach out to me directly. I'm very transparent. I'm very honest. I'm not perfect. If I've done anything wrong, I'll own up to it. My email address is Helen dot Willis, cityofSouthFulton, GA dot gov. Helen dot Willis, cityofSouthFulton, GA dot gov. My cell number is four zero three, I mean, excuse me, four zero four eight zero three four two one nine. Four zero four eight zero three four two one nine. And if you are not getting my bi-weekly newsletter, you can text District Three at four two eight four two eight, District Three, four two eight four two eight. I am on Facebook. I am on Instagram. I am on Twitter. I am very accessible. And if I can't reach you, you can reach my legislative specialist, Mr. Quaniki Ramsey. Thank you and have a great day.
All right, on to the Emerald Jewel in the crown that is South Fulton, District Four. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I just want to thank, um, the citizens who took the time to come out to our sanitation town hall last night. It was streamed on YouTube, so if you need to go back and take a look at that, um, please do. Hopefully it answered a lot of the questions, but if you still have questions, please, um, reach out to me. My contact information is on the, um, CD's website. I know my name is a bit complicated and long, cause we've had even a lot of trouble. The administration would get my name in there correct, but, um, it is on the CD's website. Um, next thing I want to thank, some shout-out to some staff members, um, Antonio, City Manager Jones, on this Jones Road Hall Road issue. Those are two dirt roads that have deteriorated very, very quickly because of trucks using those roads um, in an unauthorized manner. And, um, I actually emergency repairs because those roads are becoming impossible and we are on the way. I think the contractor should be mobilizing tomorrow. Um, the other thing I wanted to remind folks of District Four, that my regular town hall is gonna be on March twenty-third. So look out for that. Um, I'll post it in my newsletter and also on Nextdoor, Facebook, et cetera. Um, reminding everyone that we're hosting in District Four, um, April fifteenth, our Autism Sensory Festival. Our second annual Autism Sensory Festival will be in District Four at Welcome Mall Park. And shout-out to some volunteers of District Four, um, Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Public Safety Committee, that, um, met in this month. And thank you for your continued service. We'll be relaunching, working with, um, our police chief and captain for, um, relaunching the, the precinct in Cedar Grove, right? Uh, we're gonna actually make that a, a precinct where folks can actually get some service rather than having to, um, go other places as well. And, um, just want to say thank you for the folks in District Four, those who have called and, you know, given some encouragement, not only throughout the year, but, you know, pretty, pretty recently. Um, you know, as I said, you know, it's no secret that we've had our share of issues. But, um, I pray things are gonna get better. So, um, we're holding each other accountable, um, for things getting better. So once again, thank you to this great citizen of District Four and looking forward to continuing to serve you.
All right, I am going to pass it on over to the most alive district in the city of South Fulton. Five alive, Mr. Corey Reeves.
Well, thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you. Um, thank you to all of my colleagues. Uh, first I would like to, um, acknowledge one of our greatest influencers of the city, uh, Ms. Glenda Collins and who, uh, she just lost her mother this week. So our prayers go out and so District Five, please, uh, if you know her, um, just give her a shout. And I do part, plan on being part of the celebration. Uh, Thursday is Read Across America Day. So anybody want to join me at Failwood Elementary, we will be reading to the young kids starting at nine o'clock. And, uh, come join us for Read Across America. And then on Mondays, I do my call every Monday at six-thirty. Uh, so you can join us, go to www.mewe.org, uh, districtfive.org and, uh, sign up and come join us and, uh, listen on the call every Monday at six-thirty. And I love you. You can't do nothing about it. And you, the constituents, are the greatest part of the city of South Fulton.
Okay, over to District Six, Old National Highway. Our new, uh, Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comment.
All right, District Seven, uh, one of the most diverse districts in our city. Councilwoman Linda Pritchett.
Well, first, I would like to start off by saying congratulations to our Councilwoman, Mayor Protem, um, on her nuptials. She just got married on Sunday and yet she cares so much about the business of the city that she is here when she should be with her husband. And she will be soon. But, uh, congratulations to you and it was an amazing wedding, a very fun event that all of us attended. So congratulations. Um, I'd like to thank everyone who came out to our, um, breakfast meet and greet, uh, meet your new councilwoman. Uh, we have a new district boundary, so there are some communities that I've inherited. And I took the, um, time to get to meet the people in that community and others that I already knew. And we had presentations from the police department who went over crime statistics. We also had Mr. Burkett from Public Works that talked about our new sanitation program. But primarily, we want, I wanted to hear from the residents and get an opportunity to know them and talk to them, you know, at our, one of our local, uh, businesses. So we had a wonderful time, um, at the meet and greet. And many of you that were there, uh, we had good food and good camaraderie and we will do that, um, very often. Also, uh, last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to attend a comp stat meeting. Also, last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to attend a comp stat meeting, which was kind of like a high-level police intel meeting where Chief Meadows invited me to see the reports that came from the different, the different leadership in our city in different areas of law enforcement. And to be honest, I will say that I was thoroughly impressed about just the thoroughness, the attention to details, the follow-up on a lot of the criminal cases we have. Uh, in District Seven, I can say we have experienced some car thefts, well, breaking into vehicles. Um, it seems like some young people, it's been a little trend that's going on between Atlanta and South Fulton. But South Fulton Police has successfully identified some of these young persons. So thank you to our South Fulton Police Department for the hard and the good work, a good job well done. And also, I can say that our police chief, Chief Meadows, he met with the governor last week because there is an issue where juveniles, they do these type of crimes, and by the time that the officers are, you know, at their precincts writing the report, those juveniles are back home on Instagram, talking about it. And we have to do something in collaboration with the state to make sure that these things don't happen. But I want to impress upon the parents, and I know we have great parents out there, watch your kids, watch who they associate with, keep an eye on them, you know, because we just want things to go well in our communities. I also had a town hall meeting called Police Encounters, where Chief Meadows came out with his leadership, and it was really a very intimate chat where he expressed his heart towards the community and how he'd like to, uh, the community policing program, and how he liked to see more officers coming to the city of South Fulton to help keep us safe and provide us the best delivery of municipal services. Um, I'm also excited about our upcoming traffic light. Many of you might have seen me on Fox Five talking about the traffic light on Highway one thirty-eight and Bessette Road. We've had some fatalities there over the years, and it's due to a lot of reasons, excessive speeding, limited visibility, and we're doing our part to make sure that we keep things safe for people. So this is a temporary solution, the permanent solution is going to be aroundabout, and also a light at Peters Road and one thirty-eight. So we are committed to making sure that the city is safe for drivers and for the people that live in these communities. And yesterday, I had the privilege of attending Latino Day at the Capitol, which I've attended probably for over the last ten years. But I was very proud this year that I can represent the Latino community and Latino persons for our city. Myself and Councilwoman Gums, we are of Latino descent. And I want to remind everyone that the city of South Fulton is a city of inclusion, is a city of culture, is a city of diversity, and that everyone is represented in the city of South Fulton. Now, my ethnicity happens to be Cuban, so I'm first-generation Cuban-American. Y para toda la gente que son hispanos, son latino en la ciudad de South Fulton. Si necesitan algo, me pueden llamar en mi oficina, el teléfono mío es cuatro cero, cuatro siete cero ocho, ocho cero nueve siete siete cero siete. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you. All right, um, I want to say, I want to say a couple of things. Uh, it is, it is Black History Month, and I was reminded this week of the second stanza of the Negro National Anthem. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chasin' rod, felt in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with a steady beat, have not our weary feet come to the place which our forefathers side. We have come so far, we have come so far as a people, we have come so far as a city, and I don't want anyone to lose sight of that. When our country was founded after a bloody revolution in seventeen seventy-six, there were decades of debate. Um, just the time alone between the First and Second Continental Congress and the writing of our constitution was fifteen years. We've had five. If you really want to honor us as a people and give us equity in how we are treated in this country, then we need you to give us as much grace as was given to the founding fathers of this country. They had twenty years to get their government together, we've had five. Give us the grace of that next fifteen. Uh, we are going to do better, and we are doing better. We have bought, um, in the past year, we've bought nearly one hundred acres of land in different parcels around the city. Uh, we are building city facilities, we're going to be talking very soon about a fire and EMS training facility. It is going to be a regional training facility, right? So I just, I want you all to, uh, this is still the most exciting place in America, and I am still excited about our future. I also, though, do want to say, we are going to get better. This is a representative form of government, and inasmuch as this group of people embodies the hopes and dreams um, of all of South Fulton, all of our one hundred and eight thousand residents, we also embody the frustration and the anxiety of people who have been waiting decades for this moment. We are not going to waste it, and we haven't wasted it. Uh, I talked a little bit about this play, please make sure you see it. Uh, there is a narrative that the media tells about us, and then there's a narrative that we have to take control and tell about ourselves. So, uh, TrueColorsTheater.org, please come and see this incredible play. Um, in addition to all the land that we bought and all the great things that we're doing, I do want to highlight that last week, we did open our newest Economic Development Office on Old National. We had a ribbon cutting, can we give a hand? Uh, I want our Economic Development Director to go ahead and stand and take a, take a bow, Mr. Artie Jones III, continuing a legacy of excellence from South Georgia to South Fulton. And I want to take a moment to really thank all of our employees, past, present, and future. We are a lot to deal with, uh, but you all have dealt with us with grace, and you have continued to role-model for us. Um, all of us are newly-elected people, this, for all of us, this is our first city, but for many of you, this is not. And so, uh, if we don't say it enough, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, again, South Fulton is still the most exciting city in America, and I am still excited about our future. Make sure that you text the word FOLTON to three three seven 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 to sign up for my mobile alerts and messages. We got a couple of exciting events coming up in May, I mean, coming up in March, I've got a mayor's brunch and a, uh, we're working on a utility assistance drive that I'm going to talk with our council about, and then I will talk with you all about. So, but, but be, uh, visit the cityofSouthFultonGA.gov, visit our social media, COSFGA, and sign up for those text alerts so that you can know about all of the good things that are happening here in South Fulton. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, that brings us to Roman numeral ten, number five, Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Can we have this, I'd like to make an amendment to the consent agenda. Can I?
Do that in the beginning, but we are in discussion.
What, does someone make a motion?
Yes, it's been moved and seconded. So go ahead, Councilwoman Pritchett, did you have a discussion?
Yes, um, I just wanted to note in item number six, to one of my appointments, the appointment of Mary Crist to Code Enforcement Board, she will not be able to accept that appointment, um, so that appointment is being withdrawn. And the city clerk is aware of that, but it happened after the agenda was.
All right, uh, seeing no other discuss, any other discussion? All right, uh, it's been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes, the approval is amended.
Thank you, Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved as amended.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is alcohol license rezoning variance and modification cases for motion and vote. Item ten is request council consideration of Z twenty-two dash zero two-one, eleven eighty Utoy Springs Road. Request to rezone from M I X zoning district to C one zoning district to facilitate development of commercial building on one point one-three acres of land. Subject property is located at eleven eighty Utoy Springs Road and within the Cascade Corridor Overlay District, and located in District One.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request to rezone from the mixed zoning district to the C one zoning district with staff conditions as enumerated in the staff report. In addition to staff conditions, I hereby incorporate the following conditions. Prior to receiving a land disturbing permit, the applicant must comply with the proposed corrective actions contained in the corrective action plan submitted March seventh, twenty eighteen by Sailors Engineering Associates, C job number one seven two dash zero four oh. The developers shall add both a left turn and right turn lane into the development. And the third condition is the vehicle ingress, egress access point to development will align with Dane and View, which intersects with Utoy Springs Road on the opposite side of the roadway.
It's been properly moved and seconded with conditions, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved as condition.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item eleven, request council consideration of Z twenty-two dash zero one-three and C V twenty-two dash zero zero five Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Request to rezone property from O N I to M one zoning district to construct a one hundred and thirty-six thousand eighty square foot warehouse on thirty-two point nine acres of land. The applicant is also requesting concurrent variance to reduce the rear yard setback from one hundred feet to fifty feet, and to allow outdoor storage in the front yard, it's located in District One.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request to rezone from O I Institutional to the Light Industrial Zoning District in a concurrent variant request to reduce the stream buffer from a hundred feet to fifty feet with staff conditions as enumerated in the staff report. In addition to staff condition, I hereby incorporate the following conditions. Install evergreens along the entire rear yard of the property.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Properly moved and seconded as with those conditions, and, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved as condition.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is item twelve, request council consideration of U twenty-two dash zero zero seven. This is a request to consider a special use permit for a nail salon located at twenty-two twenty-five Jones Bell Road. It's located in District Seven.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the special use permit for the nail salon located at two 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 five Jones Bell Road in District Seven with the, with the conditions as enumerated that the business operations shall be limited to personal care services, including manicures and pedicures, eyebrows, lashes, acrylic and gel nails.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Nay.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved six to one.
Um, okay, uh, please sound the next item.
Next item is request council approval of an alcohol license change of ownership for J D Venture LLC, doing business as J D Package Store, for an alcohol license for retail sale of beer, wine, and distilled beverages at fifty-four oh one Fulton Industrial Boulevard, it's located in District One.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion.
I approve the change, the alcohol license based on change of ownership for J D Venture LLC, doing business as J D Package Store.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item fourteen, request council approval of an alcohol license change of ownership for Triple S twenty-two twenty-two Investment LLC, doing business as A one store, for an alcohol license for retail sales of beer and wine beverages at sixty-one twenty-nine Old National Highway. This is located in District Six.
The chair will entertain a motion.
Um, I move that we approve an alcohol license. I move that we approve an alcohol license change of ownership for Triple S twenty-two twenty-two Investment LLC, doing business as A one.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Uh, I just, I, I do want to ask, I know there was some conversation, and I hate that I didn't say this, about District One, um, about the previous one, there was some talk at the zoning hearing about a, a safety plan? Is that in the, did you all? Okay. All right, uh, you got anything? Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl. Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
All right, and we have this additional item, I'm going to ask, is Mr. McClendon available?
Yes, but this is my item, and I want like, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I just wanted to make sure that, that he could come and answer some questions if people have some questions, because we, this wasn't on the agenda, but go ahead, Councilwoman Willi.
Can I read it into the record as well? I'm going to try to read it into the rec.
Yes, please read it into the record.
Next item is an add-on item that was added to the agenda. It's a resolution by the City of South Fulton City Council to affirm the zoning classification to property located at thirty-nine sixty-five Roosevelt Highway to clarify the official zoning map by assigning the intended zoning designation of A G one to said parcel and for other lawful purposes, this is sponsored by Councilmember Willis.
All right, Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, this is, um, not to belabor, but this is simple. We have several parcels when we did their rezoning overhaul that did not have any zoning attached to them. And, uh, we probably will be dealing with them on a case-by-case basis. But the zoning was actually assigned to this parcel in nineteen eighty-eight from Fulton County. And when it comes up in our G C, G I, G C I S, what is it, G I S?
G C I C.
Yeah, G C I, it, it shows that it has no zoning.
Oh, G I S.
Yeah, G I S, it has no zoning, and it's causing, um, you know, problems for this individual business when it, um, comes to trying to, uh, go after funding and grant funding and do development. So all we're simply doing is assigning the parcel is zoning that was. So, all we're simply doing is assigning the parcel is zoning that was granted to them prior to us becoming a city. Did I explain that correctly, Mr. McClendon? Okay, so I move that we approve this measure.
All right, it's been, it's been properly moved and seconded, Mr. McClendon, did you have anything to add?
He said no.
Okay, all right, thank you, all right, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl? Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we are at item fifteen, we had held this item until after executive session, are you ready to?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna hold that for a little while longer.
Okay.
We are gonna get some answers to you all tonight, please sound the next.
Okay, next item is item sixteen, request council approval of a resolution creating a South Fulton City Hall Building Fund and an annual allotment to the fund from the General Fund, this is sponsored by Mayor Khalid.
I move that we.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the resolution on creating a South Fulton City Hall Building Fund and annual allotment from the fund from the General Fund.
Okay, that, that.
Do I hear a second?
That, that doesn't have a second, I, I was just going to, to say a few, oh, you did second it? Okay, okay, all right, thank you, it's been properly moved and seconded now, I, I, I did just want to give a little bit of feedback on this, I think, I think most of us in here in the City of South Fulton have heard of a building fund before, so we're just starting our building fund for our city hall so that when we are ready to make whatever moves we need to make in terms of land acquisition or design, we don't have to look around for the money, this will not affect this year's fiscal year budget, it will begin in October of next year, and there are also triggers, right, that if we do not collect the revenues that we anticipate, it is, the amount that we would set aside for the, the fund is reduced i- if we do not collect the anticipated revenues, and that is, that's what I wanted to say, go ahead, Dr. Rawl.
Okay, I don't have any, any other discussion.
I do.
I didn't raise my hand.
Okay, Councilwoman Willis?
Um, and it's simple, and I, I don't want to take, I don't want my no to come across as if I'm not supportive of us getting a new city hall, but as a policymaker, it is incumbent upon me to do research, and I did my research, and I've talked to Sandy Springs, I've talked to East Point, I've talked to individuals who have recently built a city hall, and basically, and I've talked to our financial advisors, and they don't recommend that we do a building fund, G M A has a low interest financing, which is what East Point uses and what most cities are using, and most of them are going through G M A, getting that low interest financing, and that's how they are building their city hall. What is recommended that we do is we get a, first of all, decide where we want our city hall to go, and then we get a recommendation and a study done on what our city hall should be and what it should look like, and so, you know, we're in good financial standing, and I, I'm pretty sure when we decide to go down that route, we will be able to do what other cities have done to build their city hall, and I, I do thank you for having the foresight of a mayor for wanting to establish a city hall in the City of South Fulton as much needed, I just don't necessarily agree with the way that, you know, creating a building fund is really necessary, we need to establish where we want to go, and then we need to get a study done on what we want it to look like and how much it's gonna cost, and then we need to do what the best practices are for us to build, with five hundred and thirty-eight cities and it's, I keep saying it's five hundred and thirty-eight cities in the state of Georgia, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to go to our other cities, find out what they did, and no one has ever created a building fund.
All right.
But I do thank you.
All right, Dr. Rawl.
I was gonna say, I, I too, I think it's a good idea that we're having a conversation about city hall, and I do think we need to find out a way, because regardless, if we get it financed, we're gonna have to pay for that, it's, it will be a note, that we paying somebody, so I, I want to ask that you get with our finance desk and our advisor to come back and bring it back in a way that is linehouse traditionally done, and I, I think we'll be able to move forward.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I struggle with the approach myself because I have known about those low interest loans from G M A and other sources, I really also think that as a city, I'm not sure if we have done enough exploration for funds that can help a new startup cities such as ours, that's why I've been talking about getting this grants department properly up and going and functioning, I also, I'm, I'm really suffering with, with trying to support something like this, when even last night, I had a meeting with the constituents of District Four in a fire station bay, and having to deal with the constant interruption of the emergency services communication, so for me, the priority for me has to be to give the good people of District Four a community center, now, not ten years from now, but now, in the meanwhile, we figure out this thing with city hall, because, you know, we talk about equity all the time here within our city, and right now, I don't think the largest physical geographic district in the city and the most populated district just had to give up two thousand plus people due, due to redistricting, not having a place to have our community meetings is just not good enough, so I want to challenge my colleagues here to do something about that, in the meantime, Mr. Mayor, let's figure out the city hall thing, let's do, do some more research, and let's figure this out, because, yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues, hats off for focusing on this, because it's time that we come up with a real plan, but let's get with our financial people, let's see what sources are out there, let's talk to other cities, and then let's figure this out, but one point five million per year right now by default to go into this fund, I, I think we could do better with that money to serve the citizens now, and then finance the rest of this later, and so, low interest and also some free money, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Gums, and I'm sorry, before you go, I do want to say, I, I hear the concerns of people in District Four, we have bought this fifty-plus acres, and in that safety training facility, we will make sure that there is meeting room for the people of District Four, Councilwoman Gums, and I'm sure that, that our, our entire council will be in support of that, Councilwoman Gums?
I, I just wanted to let you all know, it is my understanding that Mr. Jones, who is our Economic Development Director, has been trying to get in contact with our entire council coming back to executive session to present recommendations for city halls, so maybe if we have time tonight, that we can probably get briefed on some of his recommendations for where the location of city hall can be, and then we can start processing what funding needs to come along with that.
Stay, stay in touch, Mr. Jones, Councilman Sebastian, I mean, Councilman Reeves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, well, I do believe in a building fund, I believe in a percentage should be set aside, even if it's twenty-five thousand dollars, because whatever we do is still gonna cost, whether due diligence, research, whatever it's still gonna cost, and I think if we have money set aside outside of our general fund and outside of anything else specifically allocated for a city hall, a home, is that, I think that's very necessary, so that's my point of view, thank you.
I, 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 I agree, I think it'll get spent, or it won't, and then we will have a surplus for future years, but I, I've heard, I've heard your comments, and we will definitely, regardless of how this vote goes, we're going to make, we're going to be working on a city hall, so let no one's heart be troubled, we are moving in that direction, Mr., Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
We have a motion by Councilmember Reeves, seconded by Councilmember Rawl, to approve, roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl? Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Nay.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown?
No.
Councilmember Pritchett?
No.
That item fails one to six.
All right, thank you, please sound the next item.
Next item is request council approval to enter into an agreement to update our agreement to add enhancements for Real-Time Crime Center and supporting equipment for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be paid out of our funds and other funding sources, this is sponsored by I T and Police.
All right, Chief Meadows and Mr. Strickland, please come forward, I know there's at least one question, and if folks want to get in the queue, they can, or, Councilman Reeves? All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you give whatever presentation you have first.
Namor Strickland, I T Department, so this is a partnership with the Police Department and I T, and it's a foundational process or piece that we have to do for the actual camera project overall, so this is a primary location where all the cameras and stuff will be monitored, there's a lot of other things that will come out of it as well, but this is primarily that, we already have a, a lower version of this Real-Time Crime Center or the application that supports it, and this is the information to or request to enhance that, to gain all the other actual capabilities, and police can kind of speak more to those capabilities.
So, when Atlanta went to FUSIS, I got emails from, from some of you talking about the initiative, what I don't think people know is that that platform was actually developed right here in the City of South Fulton with myself and, and the I T Director, Namor Strickland, we went through quite a few different iterations of the platform, but one of the things we really wanted to see was a layer of analytics put over the top of all of our assets out in the field, this company's been able to do that, and they've been able to integrate all of the cameras that we're putting out in the public and private sector into this one platform, and so, we're really excited about it, as you all know, you gave us permission to put our reporting management system in the cloud, well, we want to make sure that we're able to harness all of the intelligence that comes from that, and also be prepared to pipe that out to the Real-Time Crime Center, I sent each of you an email today talking about how we will be changing our comstat model, and how we'll be sitting down and looking at intelligence real-time, and behind me is the commander of that section is Captain Brendan O'Neil, and so, even as tomorrow, we'll be flying out to Chula Vista, California, and taking a look at their drone patrol program, they've had their drone patrol program up and running for years, it's a world-renowned program, we're expecting to go out and get some much-needed intelligence from that, so we expect to pipe all of that into this Real-Time Crime Center, so we're really excited about it.
Oh, thank you, Chief, you know, I'm excited about it, especially about the drone patrol and the, the potential drones that we have over in the area that possesses the highest crime, and so, where is this Real-Time Crime Center located?
Well, it's actually going to be at our headquarters, what we're doing right now is that all of those cameras will be piped in, we're gonna have a number of monitors up there, and we'll be able to take, pick this Real-Time Crime Center and move it to our headquarters once it's ultimately developed, but we'll have personnel sitting there monitoring the crimes, we'll be looking at E nine-one-one calls, you'll even be able to see where all of our patrol cars are in real-time, and as they move around the city, we'll be able to move and match resources as crime patterns and trends change.
The cameras that are for the park-wide system, will they be able to be tied into this in real-time, and you'll be able to?
Every one of them, all of our license plate readers, all of our assets that we have out in the fields, many subdivisions now have gotten license plate readers put up on the outside of their subdivisions and their common areas, we'll be able to pipe all of those into the Real Crime, Crime Time, Crime Center as well, and so, we're just looking to kind of consolidate all of the assets that are out there, we also have our app that we rolled out to many of our citizens, and we're looking at also taking a lot, a big portion of the intelligence that we're pulling in from that, and even sending it out to our app so our citizens will have access to that information as well.
Correct, so the money allocated for this was going towards the infrastructure that could tie into the real-time, that will be able to be moved to?
The police headquarters.
Headquarters, that's gonna have a design build specifically for the crime, Real-Time Crime Center.
We're designing it now, not for today, but for five to ten years from now, so whatever we build today, we'll be able to take and move to our police headquarters.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I just, I just want to, so the, the hardware and the software, we'll be able to take out of there and move.
Right.
Okay, all right, Councilman Sebastian, you said that you were in the queue?
No, I was just.
Okay, all right, all right, so in the queue now, I see Councilman Pritchett.
I'm Chief Meadows.
Go ahead.
Oh, Chief Meadows, so how does having a system like this tying in all the cameras, how does this help reduce, or by what like percentage would you anticipate that it will help reduce crime in our city?
It, it's, essentially, it's a game changer, when you're able to have immediate access to all of your assets out in the field, and you're able to manipulate the cameras from one central location, it gives you the opportunity to really hone in on those areas where you've had problems historically, just in the past year or so, we've solved two murders just from our, our license plate readers that are out there, and so, our goal is to make sure that we get that information directly to our police officers in real-time, to be able to quantify a, a certain percentage, right now, it's, it's hard to say, but, you know, historically, you've been able to have quicker response times when you're able to sit down and take a look at analytics, and that always translates into, into a reduction of crime, I believe that our first year will serve as a baseline, and then we'll be able to implement more of a predictive model from that point on.
And Chief, also, how does this type of system help even with solving old crimes or tying in old evidence or old information?
So, the one thing that the City of Atlanta doesn't have, and the one thing that we've asked this company to do, is to take a look at our reporting management system, and what we're planning to do is put a layer of analytics over the top of all of that intelligence, right, so if we have a pattern of burglaries occurring in, let's say, District Four, it'll search our reporting management system and give us the six most likely suspects based on that relative geographical area, and so, when you talk about going back and looking at historical data, it's huge, because it actually helps us to get the opportunity to set up an incident database within the police department where we can talk about those patterns that have historically happened.
And are most of your officers or trained on this type of system?
Well, not yet, and that's, that's the one thing that we talked about, the, in the email that I sent to you all today, we talked about an experimental phase, we want to start experimenting with certain data exchange techniques, and as the system rolls out, we want to make sure that we're kind of tailoring the system to our needs, in other words, how are we distributing data, are we able to create tentacles throughout the police department and throughout our communities to make sure that that information gets out in, in a real-time way, and so, I expect that we'll educate our officers around this space as we roll it out, but right now, we're kind of in the experimental phase when it comes to being able to share the data and the data points that we want to see coming into the center.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Willis, I see you next in the queue.
My question is just simple, is this similar to what we see happening in the City of Atlanta? I see that they are, well, they have helicopters too, but one of the reasons they have been very successful in, in catching a lot of violators and high-crime incidents is because they're, they're seeing real-time or they're able to pick up incidents on camera systems, so is this similar to that?
It is, in fact, it's the same exact platform.
Oh, good, and so.
Right, but, you know, but as I said earlier, we actually developed it here with the company in South Fulton, and so, we went up to Baltimore Seafood, sat down, and we talked about ideas, things that we wanted to see in the platform, we kicked that back, we kicked back and forth different iterations of it, and it's, it's really at a, a space right now to where it's going out nationally, it's not just here in Georgia, it's, it's really going out nationally. It's not just here in Georgia, it's, it's really going out nationally to other police departments throughout the country.
And, well, this also, is this similar to the camera system that they had in Tennessee? Remember, they were able to pick up footage of the incident that happened in Tennessee from a camera that was located on the, I guess it was on one of the utility poles? Is similar to that? Oh, great.
Exactly, in fact, Memphis has the same platform.
Yeah, Memphis, okay, good. The other thing is, will this help us out with the litter? Like, will they be able to capture, I saw on one of the next-door platforms where they caught an individual on a camera like throwing tires. So will we be able to use footage to?
Oh, yeah.
To help our code enforcement, enforce our litter violators? I mean, I, I?
I, I, I want to ask, can we, could we, could we maybe?
Yeah, so, can, well, let me rephrase the question. Can we, will we be able to use the surveillance to help us with some of our code enforcement violations?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It'll, any camera can feed into this system, so we can put motion-activated cameras anywhere, and we'll get alerts for people dumping, so it will work.
Alright, and where would these cameras be placed? Would it be placed? No, I am, I'm, I know how to answer the question, I've been mayor and law enforcement for twenty-something years, so I'm not asking specifically where the cameras will go. My question is, would these cameras be out the entire city?
Well, yeah, and, but what we're doing right now is prioritizing those main corridors along South Fulton Parkway, Fulton Industrial, Old National, our really Cascade, that Cascade Road corridor. We're really prioritizing those areas where we've seen those patterns and trends move.
Okay.
For instance, we talked about the, the, some of the problems that we had up in District One earlier, and we were talking about how we moved resources, and then we saw we were actually able to push it. Unfortunately, we were able to push it into another district, and we're in the process right now of figuring out how to prioritize those things so that we can make sure that we have cameras strategically placed in those vulnerable areas, and, and I believe that's what you're getting to.
And I'm not afraid for residents to know, or people who don't live here to know, that we have cameras throughout our city, because what it will do is deter the crime if they know that they're being watched 24/7. And so, I welcome this platform, when is it gonna get, when are you all gonna start it?
Soon as y'all approve it.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Chief, to your team and to our IT staff as well. What impact would a system like this have on things like police chases, and subsequently on our insurance cost and rate? Do you envision a decline in both of those?
We do, we expect that it'll go down. The more that we deploy assets throughout the city, the, the less of a need it is for us to chase anybody. The minute something happens now, the first thing our police officers do is go to that, to that flock camera system and start tracking vehicles throughout the, throughout the city. And so, it becomes important for us to deploy those assets, but does that mean that we'll never chase? Probably, that's not the case. But, you know, we, we're trying to get to a space that where we're able to minimize those occurrences, and I think we've been successful in doing that since we've started deploying these assets throughout the city.
Okay, and, and as I said, that will have a subsequent lowering cost on our insurance because it will reduce the accidents during chases. Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you all. I just have one comment, Chief Meadows, you don't have to come up here talking about Baltimore seafood and crab.
I'm hungry.
We haven't, yeah, we are too. Alright, seeing no further, call the vote.
We actually need a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll, the chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the council to enter into an agreement to update our agreement to add enhancements for real-time crime center and support and equipment for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, Mister Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowell.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
Alright, I'm gonna just ask for, we're doing our, we're on our best behavior, I need our, our audience to be on their best behavior as well. We will have more conversations about this after the, after the meeting, I and perhaps some other council members may hang out in the lobby, we will hear all of your feedback from tonight. Please sound the next item.
We're on item eighteen, this is a request for council approval to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract with Osprey Management to provide interior facility renovation at Burdette Recreation Center in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousands, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents, with a ten percent contingency to total two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. The amount is budgeted in FY23 CIP budget for Public Works.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we request authorization for the mayor and council to enter into a contract with Osprey Management to provide facility renovation and cite approvals at Burdette Park gymnasium in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion?
Friendly amendment, then they changed the amount to two hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yes, Miss, Mister Reeves was not here when we, we changed it, so for the record, the item that I read, which was to enter a contract to provide interior facility renovation only at Burdette Recreation Center in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents with a ten percent contingency to two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Is that correct?
Could say, Councilman?
I, I restate, is out there to approve the?
The interior.
The interior renovation in the amount that was stated.
Alright, thank you, we have a motion in a second to approve as amended, we're still in discussion, Dr. Rowell, thank you for that save, thank you also for remembering to add that exterior part back in, Councilwoman?
No, interior only.
Interior, interior. Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Admittedly, I've been a little busy these past few weeks. Why did the amount get changed? Did I miss it? Did I miss a discussion about why it's two fifteen and not four fifty?
Is someone from Public Works here, Mister Valenzuela, would you like to just explain the change? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, approaching the mic is Public Works Director, Antonio Valenzuela.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, City Council, residents of the city of South Fulton. With regards to the question of not approving four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in lieu of the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it's due to, we are ready to provide a recommendation at this point only to do interior renovation. We're gonna follow up with you the following month to do the rest of the needs at the Burdette Park.
Thank you.
He said for interior, they'll follow up next month for the exterior.
So you're just breaking it into two, basically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, Mister Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to approve as amended, Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved as amendment unanimously.
Thank you, please sound the next item.
We're on item nineteen, this is request council approval of a pipeline crossing license agreement with Fulton County Railway LLC to repair two damaged seventy-two stormwater drain pipes located at sixty-two oh five Boat Rock Boulevard. The estimated cost for the repair of the stormwater drain pipe is estimated at two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, to be funded out of the stormwater funding line, Public Works. And I'd like to give context regarding this one, this one actually was on the agenda last month, but it was awarded to a subsidiary, Omnitracs, when it should have been Fulton County Railway, so that's why it's reappearing on the agenda.
We're just correcting the record.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you, alright, any discussion? Alright, Mister Clerk, please call the vote.
Okay, we need a motion in a second.
I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion.
I approve pipeline crossing license agreement with Fulton County Railway LLC to repair two damaged seventy-two-foot stormwater drain pipes located at sixty-two oh five Boat Rock Boulevard. The estimated cost for the repair of the drain pipes is estimated two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred, to be funded out of stormwater funding line.
Alright, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
Alright, Mister Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty, request council approval to extend an agreement with AT&amp;T to include AT&amp;T Office at Hand, which will replace the current backend phone system. This agreement is budget neutral. IT Department?
Alright, Mister Strickland, are we getting new phones in City Hall?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We, I, I would just ask that when we do get them, that we, that we get a training, particularly on the voicemail, but just, there's some kind of, those phones get very complicated. Alright, seeing no other questions, I'm going to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve an agreement with AT&amp;T to include AT&amp;T Office at Hand, which will replace the current backend phone system. This agreement is budget neutral. And also would like to request approval to enter, enter into a cooperative agreement via the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, contract number dash zero eight-two-three for athletic equipment at Wilkemall Park with Johnson Health Tech North America. An amount of ninety-three thousand, three seventeen forty-five.
Alright, it's been, those two items have been properly moved and seconded, Mister Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to approve items twenty and twenty-one together. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
Alright, Mister Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty-two, request council approval to enter into a contract with Next Level Events for the purpose of promotion and talent acquisition for the twenty-twenty-three City of South Fulton Juneteenth Celebration in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars to be funded out of the Department of Public Affairs.
Alright, if we could have Public Affairs come forward. Councilmember Willis.
You know, we've been seeing a lot of cities in trouble for procurement violations and not making sure things have been bidded out. I just would like to ask of the new budget manager if he can shed light on before, if you don't mind, why Next Level Events for the purpose of promotion and talent acquisition for twenty-twenty-three City of South Fulton Juneteenth Celebration in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars? How can this be, I want, well, I'm not gonna, was this procured out? If it was not procured out, and I want to hear this from the budget manager, because this is his subject matter expertise.
Procurement.
If you, procurement manager, he's sitting in the back, if you don't mind. If we can give some, some conversation around this, I just want to make sure we're on up and up with everything, not saying we're not, I'm not accusing, thank you, Ms. Howe, for everything that you do, I appreciate it. But I want to make sure that we are not, this is seventy thousand, thousand, to not exceed seventy thousand dollars, and I don't recall this going out for bid.
Uh, it has not.
So?
Well, he's gonna tell you, he's got, he's got an answer, go ahead, sir.
So, as far as I can understand, I've been here for a little over two weeks, there was a selection of a specific artist who's tied to a specific promoter, so that would in a sense bring it to a single-source process. That was initially what was brought to me, so there's a contractual agreement between the artists that were chosen and the promoter that they're using.
If you, if you, if you would just, if you would give me the grace and just let me cheer for a quick second?
Can I, can I ask?
Just for a quick second, just give me a quick second.
Okay. Can I, will you come back?
I will absolutely come back. I'm gonna ask our public, external affairs, Jaclyn Howell, to come and just give a little bit more context, not only about this year's contract, but about next year's, the possibilities for next year's contracts, because we are in a bit of a time crunch, which is I think part of what we were gonna talk about last month, go ahead.
Absolutely, good evening, Mayor and Council. The reason why this individual was selected is because, again, we are under a time constraint to make sure that we're procuring nationally-recognized artists, not just local artists, we will be using local artists, but we wanted name recognition as well.
Alright.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, and I, and I, and I, and I do think it's, we did have a conversation about this just yesterday. Because we did, a couple of months ago, we, you know, I, I had brought up that I, I wanted us to be hiring local people who could get our, you know, who have a connection with our residents already to get them to come out, and that they would be more affordable. But I do understand that, given the time crunch, we may have to do this part to sign an, an artist, but there may still be other opportunities for other things.
Absolutely.
Such as security, promotion, marketing. And we are going to, we're going to make sure that for Juneteenth, twenty-twenty-four, everything is bid out.
Absolutely.
We are in a little bit of a time crunch, people are getting booked out, so I, I thought that you should have that information. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Councilmember Willis, because I said I would.
Thank you, ma'am. And I get the time crunch, and I, I know we have a short period of time, however, we have known for over twelve months that Juneteenth comes around every year. And, you know, several people, several promoters have always approached me about trying to get an opportunity to work with the city, and I always defer them back to, number one, getting signed up as a vendor, and I've always said, you know, there will be a fair bidding process. This is my first time, you know, I understand you had a conversation with the mayor, but this is the governing body, and we have to vote on this, and we have to make sure that people are getting fair opportunity to work with the city. And can you specifically tell me who this promoter is? Because it just says Next Level, who is it?
Craig Garrett.
Craig Garrett?
Yes, ma'am, he's already registered with the city and has done several events at Wolf Creek as well, back before it.
And I don't have anything against Craig Garrett, and I don't know Craig Garrett, I just want to make sure that we're being fair and equitable, and I don't want people saying, well, how come Next Level was chosen over, you know, why weren't, why wasn't it a fair bidding process? And I don't want us to, you know, use the short timeframe that we have to, you know, plan in a crunch to try to push this to a single vendor without being fair and equitable. That's all I'm saying, and, and, and Mister, I'm sorry, are you just?
Which art?
Huh?
Which art? And ju-just for context, it, the process did not go past my desk for the, for the purposes of time. It actually came across my desk, and the reason why it got past my desk was because I was informed that that particular promoter had a relationship with the artists that were chosen. So you technically wouldn't be able to bid it out as they have a contract with a specific promoter, so to get those artists, you would have to go to that promoter.
I, I, I'm gonna have, thank you, I'm gonna have Mister Toms give a little bit more illumination, and I only stopped by and had this conversation when I saw this on the agenda, but they, we put a committee in place, or a committee was put in place, they picked the artists, and I think this is part of it, could you talk about that, Mister Toms?
One more question, who is we, who, who put the committee in?
I'm gonna have Mister Toms explain it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we looked at staff, so we have Corinne Smooth working on an aspect of the Juneteenth event, she's working on the, the vendor list, the food trucks, the people bringing in, things like that, then we had Solandia working on the artists, and I apologize, she cannot be here today to join us to answer some of these, these more detailed questions. today to join us to answer some of these, these more detailed questions. And then, of, of course, um, Ms. Howe, um, on the committee to actually help with the promotion side, and she actually, um, is one of the people that, you know, was part of it last year and kind of saw the mistakes that were made, um, that way they don't get repeated. And then I was assisting with some of the fireworks, and then working with Eric Runyon, our risk manager, to make sure we're covered with liability and other aspects. Um, I, I think Mr. Malcolm said, said it best, you have relationship with artists, so I'm gonna use a really simple analogy. If you want a pizza, you could, you can go to any chain to get pizza, so if you think of pizzas as promoters, but if you want Domino's pizza, you can only get it from a Domino's store. When, we're working with the budget, and the budget that was set was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's very generous, and there's a lot we can do with that money, and we appreciate it. Some artists are incredibly expensive, so I commenced Solandia and the staff that was put together, look at the artists, and I wish they can tell you the names of them. I haven't heard a lot of the artists, but a lot of people are very excited that have heard these names. And when you go to those artists, they only work with certain promoters now, the, the lights and the sound, those are being, um, pushed out through RFPs, and, uh, there's other things within the Juneteenth, such as the fireworks, all that is being bid out, you know, in accordance, but when you have seventy thousand dollars to get a full day worth of artists, and how, how many artists do we have, five? Six, six artists, um, so to get them within that budget, that's, that's why that promoter was, was selected, but again, I apologize, because Ms. Solandia could not be here today to really explain the details.
On, on, on the policy side, though, because we're just policymakers, would you just give a little background on this Juneteenth committee? When it was formed, who formed it, like, just what y'all have been doing, how long y'all have been meeting? Because we just, we didn't get to have this conversation last.
Basically, I looked at the best talent within the city and, and put people in places for success. And I think, I think the four people that were chosen for the committee is a good number. And then, and then there's subcommittees, of course, the police department has involved it with security, fire department with fire and rescue, so there's more people to the committee, but that's the primary week-to-week working committee, and they meet every Friday to go through the details, um, and then we had a larger meeting with other groups.
All right, and I, I want to make sure, does that satisfy you, Councilwoman, because I know that you had asked for them to start working on this, and they were gonna come back with a plan, I think this is what maybe they have been doing.
I, thank you, Mayor, and to be honest with you, I am totally uncomfortable. I just, you know, seventy thousand dollars, I get to give it to this promoter, because we want specific artists. And it, I just, you know, I'm just having a little problem with the fact that this was not put out for a bid to give people an opportunity to apply and do business with the city. And then, you know, I'm just uncomfortable. I mean, if it's the will of the body, you know, it's the will of the body, but.
Well, let's, 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 let's do this, I'm gonna, I do want to hear from, from, from other council members, but I do want to just a, offer this suggestion. We do have another executive session, um, we can talk, we can hold this item, talk about it a little more, and maybe come out and vote on it afterwards, but I do, I do want to respect the people that are already in the queue, so, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I am, I am really uncomfortable here when it comes to these issues that involve procurement. And I would like to hear if there's a, if there's a legal way for us to get your, what you want. I don't think it's about the money, because clearly you all know what you all are buying, and it appears, it appears to be something good that's worth the money. But I'm uncomfortable because there's so many eyes and people wanting to get into this business with the city, who have been waiting on us to put out, and, sorry, I didn't see anything, I don't know if we, did we approve something for the anniversary already too? Because I know last year we did one thing, right? Well, that is sooner, so why aren't we kind of doing that at the same time at least as well?
I don't?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't know if Attorney Hyman have any ideas as to how we, we might, you know, a, address this and try to straighten it out while we get you what you want, but I would, I'm really uncomfortable voting on this and knowing that we did not follow the process of procurement.
I'm gonna, oh, go ahead, did you have an answer? So we, we do. Okay, he's gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have Attorney Hyman answer. I, I, I do think, and, and again, I just, my apologies to everyone that we did not get to have a conversation. It's my understanding that, um, and, and Don Toms can talk about this, I don't think that Wolf Creek will be ready before June. So I don't think that we're going to be able to do an anniversary this year. We got some other stuff to take care of, but I don't think it'll be ready by June.
I, I think we could probably have a follow-up in the executive session, because I would need to ask some more pertinent questions, um, of the purchasing manager, to kind of tell you what I think through it.
In that sense, I, I agree with the mayor, we should table this and then come back.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have to say that I am in agreement that I am very uncomfortable with how this is going down. I'm very displeased with how this is going down. Particularly given what just happened in a neighboring county last week. I, I, I hear what you are saying, but what I don't hear is specifics, and maybe we will get specifics in executive session. But what I am looking at is something that was signed four days ago that says talent, six artists slash bands, with no detail about who they are. Host, with no detail about who that is. House DJ, with no detail about who that is. It hasn't been bidded out. And yet it's sitting here in front of us four days after it was signed, and if I'm not mistaken, the twenty-fourth was Friday? So it was signed on Friday to be presented to council today with some of the thinnest justification I've seen in a few months. Because, and I'm concerned that this is becoming the norm of poor planning, not starting things in a timely fashion, and then trying to ram things through this council with a minimum of detail.
All right, thank you.
I, I, I just don't see how, I just don't see how we get there.
Um, uh, Gums, just, Pithiness is a virtue.
Yeah, um, I'm in total agreement with, uh, the rest of the council. I do feel like this is being rammed down our throats, um, and it's not fair for other individuals who possibly may want to, uh, bid on the work. So I think to do, again, things in decency and order, as the City of South Fulton, we need to take a step back. I will like to, uh, I guess, make an amendment and ask for us to put this through the bid process. Um, there's, we can discuss this all day long, but again, we need to start doing things in decency and in order. And shoving seventy thousand dollars in our face for a sole contract, I get it, time crunch, but again, uh, it is poor planning. So that's my friendly amendment to bring this through the bid process. Um, if it, I know in procurement you can expedite the dates.
Well, we can, but there's currently a RFP that we're working on for concert promotion, uh, specifically for the Wolf Creek Amphitheater and events with the City of South Fulton. That particular RFP has not been, been listed yet or vetted yet by the legal department or risk management, but that RFP is currently in the pipeline.
So that RFP has already closed for the Wolf Creek, um, promotion, that is my understanding. Um, but what I am saying, this is a different event, this is a different legislation, um, to handle the Juneteenth concert, so it's, it's totally different. Um, so I do think that if we are going to find somebody for this particular event, we need to shepherd it out, um, and do it right. So just to, and even to protect you, young man, you just started working here two weeks ago.
I, I completely understand that, you know, the committee was formed and made a decision prior to.
I understand, I understand.
And the procurement decision was based on a decision that was made.
Well, we are trying to set a new day in the City of South Fulton, as of today, we want to do things in decency or, in order, and Mayor, I think we got a second. We got a second on my friendly amendment.
We, we definitely have a second, I'm pretty sure we're gonna table this, I'm gonna ask Pithiness is a virtue.
Not table, we're, we're gonna put it out for bid. And they will figure out the expedite part.
Let's, it, it, oh, okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask.
They can expedite procurement.
I, I, I would just ask that we would, I, I've asked a couple of times that we would table this, that we would talk about it in an executive session. If, if, if we make a decision an hour from now versus making one right now, it, it won't make a difference, everybody's closed.
What would be the purpose of tabling it, because it still will have to go through procurement?
Every, every.
I just want to know.
Everything is closed, these cameras are running, I would like for us to talk about this in an executive session and just come back, like, can, can we, can we do that? We got a couple, we have a couple more comments. So, uh, it is eight o'clock, Pithiness is a virtue, Councilwoman Pritchett.
But, but if, if I, if I may, um, my understanding.
Are you raising a point of order?
I am raising a point of order.
Okay.
Because my understanding is that when we go into executive session, we go into an executive session for the purposes of personnel litigation and real estate.
Yes.
This does not fall under personnel litigation or real estate. This is a seventy thousand dollar contract for an unnamed performer that has not gone through the procurement process.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and say this.
Just say it, man.
As, as, as tactfully as possible. Did I hear that you signed a contract?
She has not signed a contract.
So no contract has been signed?
No.
Okay, um.
So there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, there is, there, there is a motion on the floor. Uh, would you, would you tell me what your, what the procurement process is? What is the timeline for procurement for a contract of this nature?
So we're generally looking at a bidding process of it being advertised for thirty days. Uh, after that thirty days, it would close. During that thirty days, we'd allow them to pose questions, we would have a pre-bid meeting. Uh, once it closes, I'd send it to an evaluation committee that normally takes roughly about a week, comes back from the evaluation committee, we complete the bid tabulation, and we pretty much decide on who we're giving it to, and we bring it to you guys for an approval. So you're looking at a timetable of anywhere from five to seven weeks.
Okay, so we, we will probably, we will probably have this back at our April meeting.
Well, we can do a special call.
We will probably have this back some point, at some point in April, in which then we will have authorized someone to procure artists for us, and we will have about six weeks, we'll have to see in April who is available on six weeks' notice. But if that is the motion, and council wants to go forward, I just, we put that out there, but, but I do want to respect the queue. We had Councilwoman Pritchett, uh, 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 Councilman Reeves, and then we're gonna go back to Willis. So can we hear from those folks who haven't spoken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, as I read this, it says for the purpose of promotion and talent acquisition. So when I'm looking at these details, I don't see anything with regard to a budget related to promotion. That's true. That's true.
Okay, um, Council.
That's part one.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I'm waiting for a response, I'm waiting for a response.
Okay. Okay.
That's within, excuse me, that's married within the acquisition of the artists.
So, wh- when I think of promotion, I think of.
Absolutely.
You know, um, how it goes on our website, uh, you know, all kind of, uh, you know, flyers, mailers, um, announcements, things like that, um, but I guess it's not detailed here. And then, secondly, I, I would like to say this, when I worked here at the city, um, and there was a committee that, um, that was formed for a particular type of event, everyone on that committee understood that there, if, if we're gonna select food, venue, whatever, and it's over twenty-five hundred at that time, that I recall, everyone understood that you have to go through the procurement process. Do the people on this committee understand that you pick, that the procurement comes first, nobody's married to an artist? You know, because I understand, like, I mean, you're picking Cardi B, and you wanna, you know, ti- tie yourself to this promoter because you got Cardi B, but it's not about one particular artist, it's about finding something that works within a reasonable amount of money, and you, you, that has to go through the procurement process, you know, bidding process. So do those, can you guys make sure that, um, well, can you make sure that the people on this committee are not married to a specific artist, but are, will contemplate cer- several options for artists, and if they, and it's not about being tied to a promoter? If they, you, you guys can make sure of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Reeves.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Am I to understand that this, uh, artist that was chosen, this comes with six artists?
It's actually six art, six individual artists.
Six individual artists, that is a name draw.
Different genres.
That is a nationwide name draw.
Yes.
Right? And so, chosen by the committee, this, these six artists, but they're only tied to this one promoter.
Yes.
But the committee wants these six artists?
Yes, but like Council.
So, but in order to get these six artists, this one promoter can only provide that, correct? Would that fall under sole source under the procurement process?
I'm assuming it would.
Uh, it would fall under the single source process, so it's similar sole source, um, in which you're, it's kind of like buying a brand. Uh, you want sneakers, but you have to have Nike. So municipalities, schools, they, they do it all the time. School will hire Drake to come out, and they'll go with a specific promoter that's tied to that specific artist.
Correct.
So if you're talking about a series of events, then that would be something that you would have to bid out, because we're speaking about something broad. So for the purposes of Wolf Creek, you would bid that out, because you're getting a promoter for an event space over a broad amount of time. But if you're talking about one artist specifically for one event, just like you would hire a speaker to come out.
Absolutely.
It's, it's the same, it's pretty much the same thing.
And so under the legal procurement guidelines that will be followed up there, a sole source can be utilized, and it will be absolutely appropriate for the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, yeah, and I just, I just want to clarify that, I think it's, it's, you know, Rihanna performed at the Super Bowl. If you want to get Rihanna, you gotta go through Roc Nation. I'm pretty sure we're not getting Rihanna for seventy thousand dollars, so, but, but if you could get her for seventy, like, we would be happy to have her. Um, Councilwoman Willis.
So, one thing that, um, a lot of people don't know about me is, you know, my dad is a jazz musician, and I do understand that relationship, if they wanted, Bobby Lewis and the TCB Band, they had to go through this particular mo- promoter. And, um, and so, um, I do understand that. But my concern is the way the procurement policy is written is that anything over the twenty-five thousand dollar spending limit has to come before this council for approval. Um, and this was four days ago, and I just, you know, I just want us to have a fair bidding process. I do understand, I'm not as concerned as, you know, we want to target certain promoters, because if you want certain artists, certain artists are tied to certain promoters. But all I want, and all, my reason for questioning this is just to make sure that we have a fair bidding process. I don't want anybody saying, you know, seventy thousand dollars whipped me Next Level so special. I don't want anybody saying, you know, seventy thousand dollars whipped me next level so special over, because there's a lot of people that come to us all the time that want to do business with the city. And I always say, set up as a vendor and go through the bidding process. And that's all I'm saying. I do understand, I have been working closely with staff on policies when it, as it relates to procurement. I will be glad when we get a comprehensive procurement and P-Car policy so that we can be a little bit more comfortable. I know that we are in a new city and certain SOPs and policies weren't put in place. But I have been relentlessly trying to get a comprehensive policy since I've been elected, starting with Teresa, our first procurement manager. And I just don't like, this, this was kind of, you know, was, we knew a whole year that Juneteenth was coming around. And so, I just, I'm just uncomfortable. And I appreciate Ms. Howell and I appreciate, what's your name again? Because you only be here two weeks. I'm gonna get it.
Malcolm.
I appreciate Malcolm, all the explanation. I appreciate you, Mr. Toms, for the explanation. I just, I just was uncomfortable because I want people to have a opportunity to work with the city through a fair bidding process.
May I say something?
Um, we, we, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to clear it up for the record. This was actually given to Public Affairs in January. So, we are somewhat behind the eight ball, but that is not going, that is not going to be a reflection on the event that we produce.
And I, thank you, and I just, and I do, I want to take a moment to apologize to you and to the council. I think some of this is coming as a surprise because we were supposed to be presented this information in bank on February fourteenth. This was like one of the items on the agenda. And just, you know, for whatever reason, that didn't happen and so that's how we ended up here. Sorry to just complicate this, but we just, we just got to be briefed and we weren't briefed. So, probably shouldn't have been on the agenda since we didn't talk about it at the work session. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask the clerk to repeat the, the motion, the, the, there was a second motion. And what is it called? The replacement motion and.
Substitute.
Substitute motion, thank you. Substitute motion and then we'll, we'll take the vote.
Yes, actually, I had, actually, one motion, a motion by Councilmember Gump, seconded by Councilmember Ral to bid this request out properly.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
May, sole source.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion is approved six to one.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Toms and Mr. Valenzuela to stay after with us for just a few moments. All right, let's go ahead and call the next item. We're almost at the end. We got about seven more of these.
Next item is item twenty-three. Request council approval of a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton, Georgia, pledging to practice and promote civility in the city of South Fulton. This is sponsored by Councilmember Gumps.
So, this is actually something that came through GMA and it is, I believe, sponsored by the entire council. I just actually brought it forward. This is something that I believe our city needs to support and I'm really looking forward to it. There is a civility pledge that I would like to read and I will send that out to all of my colleagues once we're done with this. But this is something that GMA is requesting that all cities take, you know, oath and pledge their civility to support our city. So, the civility pledge is, "The way we govern ourselves is often important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions will be better when differing views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to others." That is the pledge and I'm looking forward to our council taking this action.
All right, the chair will entertain. We have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the civility pledge for the city of South Fulton.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Seeing no other discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty-four. It's request council approval of a resolution by the city of South Fulton. City Council requesting to become a member of the Metro Atlanta Land Bank Authority, approving an inter-local corporate cooperation agreement to become a member of the Metro Atlanta Land Bank Authority, allocating funds for membership to the Metro Atlanta Land Bank. This is sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian and Ral.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve a resolution to become a member of the Metro Atlanta Land Bank, approving an inter-local cooperative agreement, allocating funds for membership in an amount of a hundred thousand from contingency funds per the fist.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Clerk. Seeing no, oh, I'm sorry, we do have discussion. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank staff and Councilmember Ral for working through this to get it to this point. You know, District Four, as we all know, have a lot of open spaces and open land. And one of the discussions that we've had very frequently in District Four is preserving some lands for the future. So, I'm hoping that this step by our city, which is a little bit overdue, will get us closer to that point. I also know that Councilmember Ral has been working with our court enforcement director in terms of that whole process of what happens with, you know, blighted properties and other ways we can get properties into this land bank. So, I just want to thank everyone who has been involved with this. As I said, thank you.
Councilman Reeves.
Well, I do want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Ral and Councilmember Sebastian. As I've been wanting to have a land bank since I came in. And so, I hope that we can work on, with this process, on establishing our own, that we own our own South Fulton Land Bank Authority. And so, I hope that that process can happen, but this is a step in the right direction.
All right, seeing and hearing no further comment, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Motion by Councilmember Ral, seconded by Councilmember Gumps. Roll call, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty-five. This is the first read of an ordinance to amend Title III Building Regulations, Chapter Seven, Economic Development Incentives of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances, related to family entertainment facilities. This is sponsored by Councilmember Ral.
All right, this is a first read. It's here for the audience's edification. I trust that we can all work with Dr. Ral if we have any questions, comments, or concerns. Go ahead, Dr. Ral, did you have anything?
I just want to say, this is to address concerns we've all heard across the city that people want to entertain, be entertained, and entertain their children in our city. So, hopefully, this economic development tool will attract some of that to our city.
All right, thank you. And please sound the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is item twenty-six. Request council approval of an emergency ordinance declaring a state of emergency in the city of South Fulton, provided for city meetings to be held virtually, provided for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Sponsored by Councilmember Ral.
All right, Dr. Ral.
Again, we have been meeting in person, but this, if we need to defer, we have to have this in place. So, this is just requesting approval, declaring a state emergent in the city of South Fulton because we have to adopt this by state law every thirty days.
All right, seeing no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote. I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion. You did a motion and we have a second. Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
No.
Council. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
May.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved.
All right, these next two items again are just on the agenda for the edification of our audience. They are up for first read. You do see the sponsors. I trust that we can all work together and continue talking. I just want to expedite this. We're at eight-thirty. Did, so if you would, if you would go ahead and sound those two items together.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I have to add something to this.
Okay, all right, we're going to sound them separately, then go ahead.
Sorry.
About it, twenty-seven, which is the first read of an ordinance to amend Section One, three zero zero two, subsection M, Executive Session, Chapter Three, Mayor and Council of Title One Administration, regarding the designation of an official person authorized to take the required minutes during executive session to prohibit the unauthorized recording of executive session. This is sponsored by Councilmembers Willis and Pritchett.
Councilwoman. All right, we're going to take them separate. Councilwoman Willis.
So, I just, I know there were a lot of chatter around this and, yes, there is a law that does allow people to record with the individual, with one individual knowing that is a part of the recording. But this is in regards to privilege executive session. And as a policymaker, it is incumbent upon me to make sure that, I am doing my research, to make sure that I am making policy within the confines of the law. And I will say that I have asked the city attorney to get opinions from the Attorney General Office in reference to this legislation. I have also sought legal advice from GMA, Georgia Municipal Association, and who help, you know, give some guidance in reference to this. This is not, not illegal. As a matter of fact, they recommend it because of some of the concerns that this body had around executive session, that we put this policy in place. It should, we shouldn't have to do this. This is, this should be understood. And whether people like it or not, the Open Meeting Act does allow for executive session under personnel, real estate, and litigation. And we all go to training, we take classes, and we learn what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And we're not governing based on feelings or how people feel or what people think. These policies are made based on the letter of the law. And this is a policy because of concerns that is necessary. And what I would like to add to the policy is sanctions. I've talked to the city attorney and I would like to add to this policy, anyone found in violation of this policy can be sanctioned up to one thousand dollars with a decision of majority, uh, city council. And I have forwarded an affidavit to you, Mr., I mean Attorney Hyman, for us to consider adding the affidavit for individuals who participate in our executive session. For us to sign up all, whoever is attendance on this body and then people who come into the executive session. I've sent that over to you to review and if that is possible, we add that. But if you don't recommend, then we don't, we can leave that out. And then, the other thing I would like to add, anyone found in violation of this policy can be subject to removal from executive session.
All right, Councilman Sebastian.
Oh, sorry, that was from the previous thing.
Okay. And that is it, because this is the first read. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound.
Oh, wait, wait, she's in.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I thought, Councilwoman Pritchett, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I know that, I just want to make sure that the citizens understand that this, what we're doing is, on a local level, codifying portions of the Open Meetings Act, which is OCGA fifty dash fourteen, dash one, and dash two. And as Councilwoman Willis has said, is we really shouldn't have to do this and we're not singling out anyone, you know, by doing this. But we're trying to make sure that we provide a measure to keep the integrity of the executive session. And I would like to read a few parts of the code section so that you would understand where we're, where we're coming from and the details concerning this. In fifty dash fourteen, dash one, subsection, let's see, three A, B, or three B, no, it's three, well, three A, three B, subsection five. Says this subparagraf, exclusions from the definition of the term meeting. And what we're talking about is a meeting. These are open meetings, these proceedings, that we have as a council. But executive session does not fall under the same category as the council meeting being open to the public because this subparagraf, exclusions from the definition of term meeting shall not apply if it is shown that the primary purpose of the gathering or gathering is to evade or avoid the requirements for conducting a meeting while discussing or conducting official business. Just so that you understand, as it's been said, there are three areas that we discuss when we're in executive session, personnel, litigation, and real estate. There are legal liabilities. There also is attorney-client privileges. Sometimes there are lawsuits. There are issues that have to be confidentially discussed. And that's what we do in executive session. Now, with relation to recording, the term recording doesn't, and I'm not an attorney, I'll be specific on this. And the city attorney can correct me at any point. Recording does not mean recording like with a recorder. When you record minutes, you are memorializing what was spoken of. You're taking a transcription, someone's taking notes, somebody's writing it down, just as anyone would do in any nonprofit organization or any type of formal meeting. So, we have identified and we have specified who we have, who will be recording the minutes of our executive session. And in this section C, it says, "Minutes of executive session shall also be recorded, but shall not be open to the public." So, regardless of our personal feelings, many of us feel that we want to govern with all transparency. I want to make sure that the people in my district and all the citizens in South Fulton understand what we're doing. But there are certain things that are not open to the public. Such minutes shall specify each issue discussed, because there are only three categories of issues that we can discuss in executive session by agency or committee. In the case of executive sessions, where matters subject to attorney-client privilege are discussed, the fact that an attorney-client discussion occurred and its subject shall be identified, but the substance of the discussion need not be recorded and shall not be identified in the minutes. Then there's another section that talks about, that says attorney-client privilege recognized by state law to the extent that a meeting otherwise required to be open in the public under this chapter may be closed in order to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administrat- settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions bought or to be bought or bought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. So I think I've emphasized that point, the things that we discuss. When any meeting of an agency is closed to the public pursuant to any provision of this chapter, the specific reasons for such closure shall be entered upon the official minutes by the person that records it. And then we get to the enforcement of this. And I'm sorry to belabor this point. Fifth, OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash six says, "Any person knowingly and willfully conducting or participating in a meeting in violation of this chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Upon conviction, shall be punished by a fine not to exceed a thousand dollars. Alternatively, a civil penalty may be imposed by the court in any civil action brought pursuant to this chapter, blah, 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 blah." So this is something that the confidentiality of the business that we have to handle behind closed doors, we're not working secretly, we're working confidentially and we're working in accordance to the law. So I would just like to see that we can do that and that it's recorded on our books, that this is how we shall conduct business. Obviously, if the state of Georgia feel that the Open Meetings Act, that anyone that violates this is, can be found to be guilty of a misdemeanor, it's a pretty serious offense. And Georgia law actually applies. Our city law will mirror or reflect that. And that's all I have.
I'm going to give you a law degree.
All right, I think everyone has been heard. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Clerk, please sound the last item.
No.
Actually, I have two, three items. Twenty-eight is Charter Change, it's first read of an ordinance amending Section three point one zero A, roll delineation, subsection three and four point one three, City Clerk of the City of South Fulton Charter. This is sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian Williams and Willis, and this is first read.
This is a first read, but Councilman Sebastian, I believe you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a simple realignment of our staff that work with council to be basically in the same area of the organizational chart as council, working with the mayor. This is something that we talked about, if I recall, going as far back as May, when we had, I believe, Mr. Clerk, maybe you can check my memory, we had a presentation that included the organizational chart proposed for the future that included our staff being aligned. It's no attacking anyone or, you know, taking anyone's power away. I think Madam City Manager even agreed that we should do this. Right, Madam City Manager? Yeah. And we felt that if we get our staff, because right now, even with things like training, you know, they're kind of out there, not really being given some of the opportunities that the rest workers of the city have. So we figured that we could align them. We could also gain some consistency in terms of training and, you know, get them to, get them to be on one accord when it comes to even serving our constituents in our district and across the city in the case of the mayor. As well as, we may realize some cost savings because things like software, we might be able to share and get better prices on as a block rather than, you know, having to do them in all individual districts. So there's a lot of benefits to, to doing this. And we're all on the same page with this. So I just want to thank everyone who have agreed. And thank you, Mr. Clerk, for taking on the additional responsibility, sir. And thank you, Madam City Manager, for making the realignment possible. Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
Yes. I also want to bring up that there was a lot of chatter on Facebook regarding this as relates to the Charter Commission. And the Charter Commission had nothing to do with this change. This change and recommendation actually came from the city manager's office. And the concern was, you know, number one, as my colleagues stated, they wanted to make sure, well, these, these are employees of the city and they're not supposed to be reporting directly to the city council. The city council does not have, the mayor or city council does not have employees. The charter is specific to that. And it says that, you know, we're not supposed to be in the process of really hiring and firing. And so the recommendation came to us to move them under the clerk so that we can make sure that we try to be in compliance with the charter, make sure they get proper training, make sure that they are held accountable. And, and truthfully, they need to be getting, you know, performance evaluations and, and performance reviews, just like all other employees. And so, and we as council members, mayor and council, should not, you know, be subject to have to pay for training and classes out of our city council budget because it does not show a true delineation of our duties as policymakers and not having staff. This charter states that we're not supposed to have staff. And so while they support us, it really needs to be under our, under a person that can hold them accountable, make them, for good and bad, make sure that they are getting trained. And it was absolutely false that this was the initiation and, and recommendation that initiated with the city council. When it was first brought to our attention, we asked if it could be done administratively without having to go through this charter change process. And then our city attorney opined that because of the way that the charter states, I had it highlighted, I have, and I refer back to my charter all the time. Here it is on page twelve where it says, "The city manager should have authority to provide, at levels he or she deems necessary, appropriate administrative support staff for mayor and council members. And such administrative support staff should be subject to authority and direction of the city manager, not mayor or any council member." So therefore, the city manager's office thought it was most appropriate that we move these individuals under the clerk to make sure that we try our best to be in compliance with our charter. So no, this did not initiate with the council. No, this did not initiate with the Charter Commission. And as a matter of fact, the Charter Commission did not even make any recommendations to the General Assembly in reference to these employees. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, sir, brings us to item twenty-nine, which is the second read and requests council approval of an ordinance to amend Title Sixteen, Alcohol and Beverages of the City of South Fulton Code Ordinances, to add to Section sixteen dash two zero zero three point two, related to requirements for public safety plans. This is sponsored by Councilmember Rowell.
Dr. Rowell, I believe this was the ordinance I asked about earlier?
Yes, this particular ordinance would require that anybody who sells alcohol has to have a public safety plan on file with the police department. And so I'm asking the council to approve. This is a second read.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Councilwoman Pritchett.
So will this be, will this apply to anyone who's within first read, second read status at this time?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have said, I'm going to refer to our attorney, but I do believe the state constitution, the first article, says that we cannot retroactively apply laws.
That's correct.
Perspective, application versus retroactive.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Let's roll call vote, Councilman Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
We have one more item?
That's the municipal court item, that's the last item.
We're going to, we're going to, I'm going to take a motion. I'm going to take a motion that we adjourn for, I, I would, I would like to hear a motion. I'm going to tell you what I want to hear, that we'll go for executive session beginning at eight fifty-five so we can take a five-minute bio break. I want to thank everybody, if, if you want to stay, we're going to, we are going to be out before midnight. We might even be out before ten. But I do want to thank everybody, we have gotten all of you out by nine o'clock. So shorter meetings as, as promised, we're still delivering on that, even with a little mini executive session. But with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for legal personnel and real estate.
Second.
Beginning at?
Beginning at eight fifty-five.
Beginning at eight fifty-five, my bad.
Thank you, it's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, we're just going to take this vote by a show of hands. All, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that was unanimous. All right, thank you. We will be back as soon as possible. And thank you.
Recession at eight fifty-